Good to go, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see so many names and faces out there. I'm Kathleen Foley, and with me tonight are trustees Woods, Starbuck, Fatty, and Curdo, and we have with us also the village trustee Michelle Ascalillo, and Bugsy, Robert Downey Jr., who is our highway crew chief, and two special guests who I will introduce in a moment. I wanted to explain how the meeting's going to work this evening first. So we're going to open with a discussion on the main topic this evening, which is garbage, and then they'll have, we'll break up the meeting a bit, so there are opportunities, several opportunities for question and answer after the presentation by Royal, and then after the finance discussion and after the operations discussion. So there'll be multiple times where you'll be able to ask questions. I would ask that we be neighborly to each other and respectful to each other and to our guests. If you can avoid repeating questions that have been asked before, that would be great. But I know there are lots of good questions coming in, and we're eager to have them and hear them. While I have everyone's attention, recycling, because of the incoming storm, ice storm, this Friday night, recycling is going to shift to Saturday morning. It's all about being flexible right now, as we deal with weather and multiple other factors. So don't put it out until Friday night or Saturday morning, I'm gonna get picked up then, rather than, rather than Friday morning. And do please watch the village's website and Facebook and Instagram for updates on parking. And while I also have your attention, you can also get village news delivered right to your inbox. You can go to the village website, coldspringnewark.gov, and on the homepage under Citizen Action Center, if you click Subscribe to Emails, that will automatically add you to the list that Jeff, where Jeff posts announcements directly to your inbox. And texting is soon to come, we're working on that, trustee Woods and trustee Starbuck are working on that. So also want to remind the public that this isn't a public hearing, it's a public meeting. It's an opportunity for all of us to, to be educated about the decision that's being made going forward regarding garbage. The contracts, entering into contracts is at the discretion of the mayor and the trustees. And we've been working at this a long time, now we're bringing the public on board. Do commit to having the, the text of the contract available within 72 hours after signing. So you'd be able to see the full terms, and I think after tonight, you'll have, you'll have a really good sense of what the terms are going forward. So it should be, should be pretty clear by the, by the end of this conversation. And this conversation is, yes, about garbage and recycling, but at the core of this conversation is getting our highway department back to work on our streets, on infrastructure projects that make a real difference to our quality of life in the village, sidewalks, crosswalks, storm drains, building maintenance. This is about giving three days of their time back for the work that we all know needs to be done and can't be deferred anymore. So how did we get here? The village has been reviewing options and alternatives for garbage and recycling, going back at least to 2011. The first conversation that I remember was under trustee Arinos Saratus in 2011. It may have been longer, but it hasn't worked financially. And things have shifted to make it work now. So over time, our garbage fleet has aged and become expensive to repair and hugely expensive to replace. And the economics of garbage and recycling have also shifted. We no longer make money selling recyclables, and tipping fees have grown more expensive year on year. So the number, the numbers for shifting to a contract for garbage and recycling make much more sense. And our village accountant is going to tell us more about that. So under Mayor Morandi, a public bid for garbage services was released on the 5th of November of last year. Bid results were released and discussed at a village board meeting on the 23rd of November, right before Thanksgiving. That meeting is available on the village's YouTube page. The first 10 minutes of the meeting is where that discussion happens. The Morandi administration deferred the finalizing of the bid and contract process to the new village board, this configuration of trustees for review. And so our administration has taken up the conversations with the low bidder, Royal Carding. And we've reported it every public meeting we've had this year, all the meetings in January. I'd like to particularly thank trustee Emerita Marie Early, who did the initial heavy analytical lifting and communications to get the bid out. And she has been invaluable to us, and particularly to trustee Curdo, as he digs through numbers and, and is carrying her work forward. So also thank you to trustee Curdo and trustee Woods for, for digging in and making sense of huge amounts of detail. Our highway superintendent, Robert Downey Jr., known affectionately as Bugsy, for helping us to work through the logistics and make sure that we continue to provide excellent service to villagers. And thank you to our rock star village accountant, Michelle Ascalillo, who really has made the numbers work. And now I'd like to introduce you to our guests tonight, Jim Constantino and Elizabeth Constantino are here. Jim is the, the general counsel for Royal Carding. And I'd like to ask him to make a presentation to all of you on the services that Royal can provide the village. Thanks so much for being here, Jim.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you trustees for inviting us to come in and try to explain how we envision a transition will occur, and hopefully answer most, if not all, of the questions you may have. At the onset, let, let me introduce my daughter Elizabeth. She's an associate in our firm and completely familiar with, with this matter as well. What I'm hoping is that even though I'll go through a series of topics with you, the transition is going to be seamless. Same way you residents curb their trash twice, once a week, and the recycling once a week, they'll do the same thing. And the container service that is provided by the village will be provided by Royal Carding. So the actual service itself, we expect to be no different than what's happening today. A little background on Royal Carding. So Royal Carding is about 70, nearly 70 years old, and has been picking up your municipal neighbors in Nelsonville, the city of Beacon, the villages of Wapinjers and Fishkill. In some places, close to 40 years of uninterrupted municipal service. Some of the earlier discussions with privatizing or bidding this, this process out, one of the big concern is once we go out of business, we, the municipality, what happens with the next contract? We now are effectively subject to the whim of the contractor. My only response to that is there's a 40-year history with Royal Carding, with these other municipalities, and that there is competition, you had two other bidders, we happen to be the low bidder. Beyond that, I, I think the reputation of the company should, I think, speak for itself without regard to some issues and concerns you, you, you may nevertheless harbor. By the way, I, I believe that the prior administration did interact with some of your municipal counterparts to find out what, what is it like, what, what happens on rebidding, what are the increases, and how responsive is Royal Carding and the quality of the service? And the fact that we're here today, I think, suggests that the response to those questions were, were favorable. The transition. There, all of the residences, there were addresses in the bid, and all of the container service, these were all specified in the bid, will be serviced at the same rate as in the past, garbage once a week, recyclables once a week, container service is a little different, sometimes they're serviced twice a week, but the service level remains the same. The only, the only transition there is, and I've discussed this with, with the mayor and trustee Curdo, your day of pickup for trash will move from Tuesday to Thursday. That's, that's just a, and, and the purpose of that, Royal Carding is already in the village. And when we service a municipality, as all of our other municipalities, Royal Carding also provides private service. We try to have the truck on the village streets, on the city of Beacon streets, as little as possible. So trying to, by consolidating pickups, we eliminate truck traffic. Each residence will receive 195 gallon, and there's different sizes, I'll talk about that in a moment, is entitled to receive a 95 gallon cart for trash and a 65 gallon cart for recyclables. Together, they constitute about five garbage cans per unit. Since you're able to put, if you have an extra bag on top of the cart, you, you can consider your volume to be about six garbage cans are of, of material. Our experience is that once you get a 65 gallon cart for recycling, your recycling will increase dramatically. That has been our experience in all of our municipalities. So you're going to, instructions for recycling are laminated on top of the cart, which is designated for recycling, which we've had our recycling audited by the facility where your recycling is disposed of now and where it will continue to be disposed of, at the Rec community Recycling Center, just up the road in Beacon. And the quality of the recycling has been just outstanding, way above the national averages. We expect it'll be the same in the village, and we also expect an increase. The only, the same, the, the carts are on wheels, you roll them out to the curb, you leave them there, ideally the night before, because they typically start early, try to get through the village, some of the, were difficult streets, early in the morning without traffic, and roll them back at night. Two other sizes, there's a 65 gallon and a 35 gallon. We, we will try very hard to discourage any resident from using a 35 gallon cart. It really only holds one, one garbage can worth of trash. And the 65 actually is, is pretty efficient for most folks, but the, we encourage you to, to get the larger can. If there's some issue with storage, we understand that, but I don't have the dimensions, I was asked by trustee Curdo to, to get that. We, we dropped off a 65 and a 95 at the village, so you could kind of compare the sizes. But the, and the 35 obviously is smaller, but not of such a character that it would make, at least in our view, a difference. I, I, I would suggest that Royal Carding, which has thousands and thousands of carts out as we speak, way less than 1%, or 30, I, I would say maybe a tenth of 1% are 35 gallon carts, very, very few in, in use. The 65 is just much more convenient, and of course, the 95, if you, we encourage you to use that. How will the carts be distributed? It takes, the, the lead time varies, supply chain and COVID notwithstanding, as supply chain issues. Somewhere maybe six weeks, I think, could be a little earlier, could be a little bit later. Once the carts come in, we need to assemble them, and then we need to distribute them. We will distribute the carts over two Saturdays. Half the village will get the carts on the first Saturday, and the village, the other half will get it on the following Saturday. So if you get your cart, once, if you didn't get your cart on the first Saturday, you'll get it the next Saturday. That information will be provided to the village, so they could post information on the website if anybody has a concern. Again, we, we encourage you to take the 95 and the 65 at the onset, unless there's some particular reason why you can't. Give yourself a chance to use it, there's a procedure for switching the sizes if you want something smaller. The question came up about, well, what do we do with the old garbage cans? Because once we switch, you, you won't have a need for them for garbage. And we have discussed providing a container at the highway garage, where if you wish to dispose of your cans and have them recycled, there'll be a, there'll be a disposal point. We'll wait to see how the, how the residents react, and if they feel they'd like that service available to them. We will service, well, the way the bid was, was composed, it, it had several elements to it. One had to do with picking up the litter baskets on Main Street. They will be serviced twice a week, as they are now. There is a, a line item for service on Sunday, I know the village is considering that, and Royal Carding is able to provide a litter basket pickup on Sunday, so that we're very much aware, particularly, for example, in the city of Beacon, where their Main Street on the weekends, it's quite busy during the season, and they want, they want Main Street kept clean. We're very much aware of that, we know exactly how to service these facilities. The, again, using the carts, you put the garbage in them like you would do anything else. If you have an extra bag, you can put in the, on the top of the cart. It comes with a lid, of course. If you are a habitual over producer, if, if you have a, a home where you're exceeding the, what I would call a five to six can limit regularly, occasionally is not going to be a problem, the men will pick it up. By the way, we only have men operatives at this time, so they'll, they'll pick it up. But if you're someone who needs an extra cart, you need more service, then you can make those arrangements through the village. There will be an extra fee, though. The contract price was for base service. And I might add that this base service in our, in our other municipalities, probably satisfies more than 95% of the res, of, of the residences, certainly the single family and, and even most of the two families. Others might, may, may very well need some extra service, and they can make those arrangements with, with Royal Carding. What if you're a location where the cart isn't, isn't going to work, but you need and one extra cart isn't going to work? And there'll be some, it wouldn't surprise me, that need steel container or steel container-like service. The price for the extra service will reflect a credit for the service that's already provided under the contract. And I'm just going to use this as, as a, as an example. So if, if your particular residence, if, if the, if the per unit price per residence is $20 a month, then, and you're a person who needs $50 worth of service, you will pay Royal Carding, you, you would be asked to pay Royal Carding, the $30 difference. And so that, therefore, you would be getting effectively the benefit of the service that is already included with the village, the village contract. The process to change the size of a cart is going to be, you'll contact the village, let them know what you'd like to do, and, and then the village will contact Royal, this is what we're proposing. This is how we do it with our other communities, because we'd like some control over this. And to make sure we're, we're meeting your, so the village knows that Royal is being responsive to the resident. Royal will do, exchange the cart, there's no fee for that, the sizes. But there is a, there is a process, you don't call Royal, you just contact the village and tell them what size you'd like. As I mentioned, there, there, we will provide additional services for those properties that need, that, that have extra, the need for extra pickup, and there, there will likely, there'll certainly be some, I'm sure of that. The carts, the carts are the property of Royal Carding. You, and they will be replaced without charge. For ordinary wear and tear, sometimes, believe it or not, the, the trucks that, that pick them up might, might damage them. If, if Royal Carding damages the cart, it's replaced with, without a fee. However, if the cart is damaged because of improper use, here's, I'll, I'll give you two quick examples. We've had some locations where the homeowner is doing a renovation project in their house, and they decide to load brick and dirt into the cart. It's not a construction and debris cart, it's for municipal solid waste, your household waste. And the, the carts aren't designed to hold that kind of weight, so they'll burst. Also, this time of year, believe it, people clean out their fireplaces, and the embers, they think are out, are not, and then the cart melts. Those sorts of circumstances, the cart will be replaced, but there will be a fee charged to the village. I expect that the village will seek reimbursement from, from the resident. Again, given our, I mean, thousands and thousands of municipal customers we pick up, just in your neigh, in your, with your neighbors, this is not a big issue, but, but occasionally it is, and we wanted to alert you to that. Other services under the contract include a Christmas tree. Your Christmas tree disposal is going to be, it's included in the contract, pays the base contract price. And you'll, you'll dispose of them as you have in the past. There are also other services that we're, we're working through. Brush pickup, which we have a schedule that, that may vary, and we're making arrangements, if, if the village goes forward with it, and, and maybe they want some extra pickups, we've, we've provided information regarding that. There's, there's a provision, I don't know, Mayor, we haven't discussed this, but for bulk pickup, once a year, where if you have couches, what we call white goods, refrigerator, washers, you can curb them, and we can, we'll pick them up, and there's a, if the village elects, they, they ask for a bid to do that once a year. We, we do it certainly for, for Nelsonville as well, they have that service, and you'll make a decision. You will be assigned, the village will be assigned to dedicated administrators. There's nothing more frustrating than, than calling your, your contractor and not having someone to talk to. One administrator is billing, so if there's any billing questions, she'll be the one completely familiar. She's also the, the, the lady that handles the city of Beacon and, and their other municipalities, so she's very familiar with this process. And you'll also have a contract administrator, there's a question about service, frequency, missed stops, occasional issues that come up. So there'll be an individual that you will have a cell number, an email number, and of course, a phone number to reach. And we have found that having people dedicated to your location and familiar with the, the neighborhood just makes responding to questions much more efficient. That is my thumbnail of the process. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. If I don't have the answer tonight, I assure you, I will get them to the mayor. I think you would agree, Mayor, we're pretty responsive to questions, and and we're fully aware. One other thing, any change, there, there's always discomfort with change, no matter what it is. We, we, particularly, so you say garbage. We're used to a certain cadence, we're used to a certain process, we're used to putting it out at a certain hour. Our trucks typically pick up routes, it's remarkable, within, within minutes of the same time, every day of each week of each month, people set their clock to it, some, and so this will be, I don't know, we tried to, we've been picking up your garbage because of some issues you've had with, with your rolling stock. And we've been following the schedule, we, we usually have, we always have a village employee on the truck to show us the route, the way the village does it. I, I expect we will follow that route. There may be some changes, those changes are only designed to get us through the village as quickly as possible. You don't need garbage trucks on your streets more than the absolute minimum. So that concludes my comments, are there any questions?
Well, we'll start first by thanking you, because yes, Royal has been an enormous help over the last few months, as we've had both mechanical difficulties and then staffing shortages with COVID. Royal has had the villages back, and even with your own shortages, made sure the garbage got picked up. And the service has been efficient, the, the customer service from our end has been fantastic, and I even was contacted by a resident to, to note that she thought your trucks were quieter, that the process was quieter. So we'll start with questions from the board, and then shift to questions that the public might have for Mr. Constantino. Go ahead, Catherine.
Um, first, I'd like to say that when I, that when I wasn't living in the village, I lived up in a condo community of Wapinjers, and the garbage pickup by Royal was seamless. So when they, you know, they show up the same time, all the time, they, they really do do a great job. My question is basically about Main Street and not the commercial side of Main Street, but the resident side of Main Street, because there are, you know, various apartment buildings where there is no real room to store the rolling cans. For example, the building next to me has regular garbage cans in the back, and they go out, either we do it, or the, the Jose who works for the Handelsman Organization puts them out on Rock Street. But for all those individual second floors, and I know that Royal does Beacon, and they have the same thing there, so I just would like for those folks who do live above businesses on Main Street to address how that would be picked up.
Well, I'm going to say that I would expect that the same way your size of carts notwithstanding, that may be an issue. But you're curbing your garbage now, we've picked it up, I think, half a dozen times now. So I'm not quite sure, I'm, I'm envisioning that the same way you're putting the cans out now and where you're putting them, you do the exact same thing. If you need a smaller cart because it can't accommodate a particular area, that's one of the reasons why the village, the bid, put those carts. The current garbage cans you're using can be, they're typically going to be 35 gallon carts. In some cases, a little bit bigger, they could be 55 gallon carts. We cans, for many reasons, which I think you'll appreciate, we don't, we, we want an automated process, the carts are picked up with an automated process, not one of our automated trucks. The, the back of the truck at the hopper has lifters, so they roll the cart out, the lifter picks up the cart and dumps it into the hopper. We want our men lifting as little as possible. They can roll, that's fine, hook onto the cart, onto the tipper, that's fine. So I, I, I don't think your residents are going to experience a big difference. They, we'll, where there's an issue with size of carts, that's why we have an administrator, and they will work with the, each resident to make sure that we give them the appropriate amount of service with the equipment that will work in their area. And again, you, you, you mentioned Main Street, the, the, the issue with Main Street, Beacon, I, I, I alluded to, alluded to, I mentioned it earlier, was always getting the litter baskets cleaned up. I I I alluded to, alluded to, I mentioned it earlier, was always getting the litter baskets cleaned up. And making sure that Main Street was was clean, but we haven't had those kinds of issues that. Recurring issues with residents there.
If I may maybe make it a little clearer. I know that I'm not worried about the municipal or you know, the cans on Main Street. But an apartment building that has four or six. You know, two floors and there's multiple people living there, I mean, sometimes they just put the bags out on the street. I mean, you've probably seen that, that's, you know, I mean, there are some people who put them in the municipal cans. Which historically was not supposed to happen, but it's neater.
Is that in some seventy years of, I wasn't there the whole seventy years, even though I might look like that, but. That in this seventy years, the company has been doing this, I can assure you, we will come up with a solution. For all of the properties, there's nothing unique in the village of Cold Spring. There may be several, you know, properties that needs some custom service, but we'll figure that out. I I'm just completely comfortable, we're gonna, we're gonna solve that, those kinds of problems and I, that's what we do, that that's.
I'm sure you are, that I just thought for anybody who was, you know, dialing in, maybe just to raise their comfort level a little bit in terms of. How their particular Main Street thing, because household, as I said, I I lived in in Wappingers and you guys are. They they do a fabulous job, and so I'm not at all concerned about. Residential garbage and I mean, I have a business and guys are great, pick up my stuff, you know, and so. Not worried about that, I just, I thought perhaps people living above stores where there are multiple people, you know, households. In the building, some of them do have doors in the back and can put them out the back, but some of them don't, so. It's just a, you know, really. A level trying to raise the comfort level for the renters on Main Street.
Well, one of the things I I I've tried to assure. Well, certainly trustee Curdo and 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 the mayor and our discussions. Is there are, there we, there is no doubt, there will be a number of. Properties that need the service customized. And I I just fall back on how we handle our other municipalities and I just. I mean, if you've if you've got a property that we can't figure out how to pick up, that one is one I have to go see because I don't.
I have no doubt you can. Thank you, appreciate your answer.
Other questions from other trustees?
I I have a question. It sounds like you guys are pretty flexible and if we notice, for instance, that. We need two Christmas tree pickups or we need more brush pickups in November. When people are putting out their leaves, is that something that, you know. Maybe the base contract says once a month and then we call you up and say we're seeing a trend where we need more. Is that something that's relatively easy to add?
I'm going to say yes. And this, by the way, the topics you've raised. We've already discussed, trustee Curdo's raised it, the mayor has raised it. And what what's particularly, the the way I've interpreted your questions, Mayor and Mr. Curdo is. That if we do need extra brush pickup, you know, we we don't wanna, you know. We want to have it in place. We want a process in place where we're not calling up and saying, okay, now how are we gonna do it and when are you gonna come and if you can do it. That will there be a process in place for us to say, there's been an unusual amount of production, can you give us extra service? The only thing we ask for. When it comes to a custom service is some notice if you can provide it and. And so we we will, if you, because again. While the company has a lot more than a hundred trucks on the road every day, they are busy. So it it's not like, oh yeah, I've got an extra truck in my back pocket, I'll send it down there, we'd like to have some notice to provide the service. But those issues are being specifically addressed and we have a an addendum to the contract. I'm I'm using that word, we don't have a contract yet, but that covers some of these topics, I in fact, that was emailed to you. Late earlier this afternoon, trustee Curdo. The answer to your question, I think, is a long yes, we can handle it.
And then one more question, because I know certainly there are residents who produce a lot of cardboard. With Amazon shipping and things like that. And I I've taken a look at your recycling guide. If the boxes are broken down and like sandwiched or stacked inside each other. Do they need to be inside the can or can they be placed beside the can?
I I the service that's provided at the price we're providing it. You you know the the saying, it's not about money, it's about money. When I, we can do whatever you want, but the service that we're that was bid and that we're providing it at that price point. We want the material in or on the cart. An occasional. Extra box or two on the side, the men will pick it up, we will be picking up your trash with a rear loader. Again, that's the traditional hopper in the back. So there will be men on the ground moving the carts out. So we will accommodate that, but if we have someone who's putting out. An extra sixty five gallons of recycling week in and week out. We we can accommodate that with another cart, but there would be an extra price.
Okay, that makes.
Best I can answer your question on that.
No, just wanted to know if it all needs to be inside.
Inside or on top, it's okay if it's on top too.
That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Eliza. Tweeps, Joe.
I have a question actually and also just a comment. Thinking that, you know, one of the things about moving service to a private company like yours. Is that. We want to make sure that everyone understands that we're not, it's not a comment on the service that we have thus far. The guys work very, very hard, day in, day out. Our streets are basically immaculate, we're very, very lucky for the service that we get. Really about the opportunity to manage very limited resources, both manpower, people power and money. And so I think we should all keep that in mind, this is not a reflection on the service that we have now. Those guys do a phenomenal job, this is about making sure that we do right by this, the limited resources that we have. And and making sure that that these guys can also work on the other things that are actually happening in the village as well. Including the streets and brush and you name it, so that that was just one thing I wanted to put out there. So thank you, Bugsy and your team, I see you, Bugs. The next question I had was actually about communications and just kind of curious what happens if. For example, if there is a snowstorm or a situation where the the service is going to change, how do how do residents find that information out?
In the most extraordinary of events. Royal Carding has. Pulled their trucks off the road. After the service has started for a particular day, it's only based on safety. That's very rare, typically, depending on the weather forecast. We will. If it looks like a storm that's going to require service to be. Cancelled for the the following day. We we will, we post on our own, you know, we have through various social media. Ways of of communicating that. Typically, it's a one day delay, so people who put it out, just leave it out and get it the next day. What happens many times is we get five thousand phone calls saying, hey, I think you missed me, but. But we will, we will communicate that, now we have weather coming up, for example, on Friday. We don't think, we don't think it's going to be of a nature so far. That it's going to interrupt our service, but we're not a hundred percent sure. And we we will be providing service, I think, on Saturday. Your 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 truck is is out of service at this time. And what I discussed with Mayor Foley is, right now, we don't think it's an issue, let's be safe about this. Just ask, post to the to the residents that we're gonna grab the recycling on Saturday, put it out Friday night. But but that doesn't, that's not a big issue. Trustee, was we 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 do communicate that, we we will communicate that, of course, with our municipalities. And you have a contract administrator, that is, it it'll be the gentleman, that'll be his responsibility to make sure. That the highway department is notified of that and at the mayor's office and the. And anybody you tell us to notify, so you can you can get that information out. But i- in most cases, it's a delay of one day, so that's the that's the worst that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tweeps, and thank you for recognizing Bugsy and the team. You're exactly right, any other questions from the board, shall we open to the public?
Just one question, Kathleen. So Jim and your team, I just wanted to thank you for your level of professionalism. You've answered thousands of questions of mine and the conversations have been very frank, so we haven't. You know, I I use the term BS loosely. You know, there's straight questions with straight answers and you guys have really been, you know, helpful in this process of getting to the point where we are today. So for that, I really do appreciate it. I think one thing that might be helpful, because we have received some correspondence from some people with either. Significant space issues or just possibly being elderly. The thirty five gallon trash may come into play probably a little more than we think for certain people. If it's at all possible to get a demo of that size, just so someone can see it. It may also reinforce the fact that thirty five, you know what, I'll make sixty five work, you know, everybody in their head has a conceptual knowledge of what they think. But if you could do that, I think that would be helpful, because I think there are going to be some, not a lot. That are gonna want that just for many, many reasons, and I think that would be helpful if they can see it. I'm a big garbage guy, you know, my kids come back from school and they come back from the city and we clean their rooms out and I put stuff all over the place. I think I'm a habitual garbage person, but when I saw the ninety five gallon bin in front of Main Street, that's a big garbage can. I think I could probably live with that and I consider myself to be an excessive garbage person, but that's a big bin, so seeing to some extent is believing. So if you can make that work with the thirty five, I think that would be really, really helpful for the process.
Elizabeth, you made a note of that.
And thank you again for your, you know, your help and your candor about everything, and I did receive your addendum and I just have to take a look at it. You have addressed a lot of the issues that some people have had with supplementary services and things like that. And I have no qualms that you can execute anything that we can almost come up with within reason. So I am personally not worried about any of that.
And the, just so everyone knows, the bins are in front of Village Hall down toward the entrance to the police department, you can. Have a look. Okay, are there members of the public who would like to address questions to Mr. Constantino? And Jeff, I'm gonna turn the management of this over to you.
Jennifer.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, can can you say your name and address, please?
Oh, sure, it's Jennifer Gordon here at Five Fair Street.
Hi.
Hi, um, question on times, because this has always been an issue. As most of us on this call live in these narrow streets is. What are the times of the pickup, because three o'clock in the morning has always been a major inconvenience if your bedroom is ten feet from the road.
We we won't be picking you up three o'clock in the morning. We've been coming, the the times we've been coming over these last. Few weeks because of some issues you've had with your vehicle. We have been coordinating with the village. I believe the typical start time, I I'm gonna confirm this, to pick up will be no earlier than six AM.
Okay.
I'll I'll confirm that, Mayor, but I I I'm just the nature, we operate in many jurisdictions that actually have noise ordinances and. But I'm, I I don't believe we will be on the village streets before six AM.
Jim, I can, I can confirm that for you, you guys have been coming down at six AM every time we've asked you to come and help us out.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and we also did talk about the fact that we need to make sure that we are clearing the area around. The school sufficiently early so that as the buses are going out. So Royal is aware of of that traffic juggle in the Upper Village. I think Jane Jane Tim had her hand raised, I think.
Jane, you muted.
Sorry, Jane, we can't hear you. You and you can all follow up, we can follow up tomorrow by phone, unless you get it sorted in the meantime. Are there other hands raised, Jeff?
Ralph, Philo.
Hello, Mayor Emeritus.
Oh, how was everyone? So my neighbors, we currently live on a right of way street. It's about a third of a mile long and the village doesn't currently drive the garbage truck up to our homes. I would assume the ninety five gallon can is quite heavy. I I do not expect myself, my wife or my neighbors to have to carry or to wheel a ninety five. Gallon cart, a third of a mile, is there a possibility for you guys to. Actually enter a right of way street or what can we do?
The the, let let me make my a couple of comments there, first. The rolling the cart, if you have never done it. I want to assure you, it's remarkably easy, it is not difficult, it's not like dragging down three garbage cans. Sure, I'm sure what you're doing now is going, right now is going to be much more difficult. But let's assume for the moment that you don't see that. We're not going to enter into our our contract. We, that would be described as, we would refer to as in-service. And the contract required the carts to be picked up where they're picked up now. The bid. Included a requirement for the contractor to be familiar where all the garbage cans are for being picked up. And obviously, we're familiar with that and we've been picking them up. But if you, in-service poses a lot of issues for us. Not the least of which is some insurance issues coming on to, you said it's a right of way, I'm not quite sure if that sounds like a private driveway. So the answer is, if you need smaller containers, then that you may be an example where. A smaller container. Or is more efficient for you, but we're not, we're not going to be able to provide in-service. And go in and get your cart and roll it out for you, just just not part of what the bid service covered.
Yeah, um, yeah, so my comment would be is, we're pretty, pretty good about our garbage and, you know, we end up with. Usually three quarters of a bag or less, but it's easy to put a bag in the back of my wife's car or my truck and bring it to the end of the road. I am not wheeling a cart a third of a mile, so I'm not sure how we can. And my neighbors will agree, it's 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 not feasible, and again. I'm not sure how we can work it out and I'm sure we can, but you know, when the rules change for us, it's kind of hard. So I I guess.
Let me ask you a question, is there a place? Out by the road where you put the bag now?
Yes.
That you could leave a cart?
Leave your royal cart.
Yeah, the problem is getting the cart there, I. Nice, I'll leave it there, I don't think, well, so, you know, the village code says that, you know, they don't want the cans out. You know, before four PM than the night before, so I don't think that's really. I mean, I'm willing to do it, but I don't think it'll look good for the village, having the carts down by the street all week, but I'm not opposed to that, but.
Well, why don't, okay, so you're you're gonna be one of those. Well, why don't, okay, so you're, you're going to be one of those.
Yeah, there's five.
Can't answer that question tonight. Let our, let our, our guys look at the situation and see what's what.
Yeah, there's, there's five houses, so it's not just me. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. We'll follow up for sure.
Thank you so much.
Jane, we'll go back to you. It looks like you're unmuted.
Oh, yes, I just want to, I lived in the village. I mean, I lived in the town of Poughkeepsie, Spackenkill area. For many, many years. And Royal was always terrific. I just wanted to say. Thank you to Royal.
Very kind of you. Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Jane.
Donald McDonald.
Donald McDonald, ten B Street. Maybe it's been covered. What are the implications for our taxes?
Michelle, would you like to? Michelle, we're going to go into the financial discussion more actually in a section. So, Don, are you able to stay with us to hear the?
Yeah, sure. It's coming up in other words. Okay, good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And there'll be opportunities for question at that portion, too.
Shelley Gilbert.
Hi, thank you. I, great presentation, by the way. I think a lot of questions I wouldn't have even thought of asking were answered. But I want to bring up something a little bit philosophical, I'm sorry, but it pertains to the future. Of waste management and that is, right now, I, I create. Like the, a tiny bit of trash every week. Because that's a goal of mine to be zero drop, I mean, zero, zero waste. So I barely put any trash out, but maybe two or three times a year. You know, I put a lot out. So that means if I took a thirty-five gallon, which is more than sufficient for my needs, the times that I would want to put out. Sixty or seventy gallons, I, I mean, that, I'm just asking for those of us who are trying not to create waste. And now we have the flexibility of putting out a tiny bag. And then the other, you know, three times a year, we put out three hefty trash bags. How, what should we do? Should we just did a huge ninety-five one just to?
Let me answer that question. Our experience and I, I thought I might have touched on it. If you occasionally. Now occasionally is what you've just described.
Yes.
Put out an extra bag. Well, if you, and you, you have extra and you put it on top of the card or you can get it there.
Okay.
It's going to be a non-issue.
Okay.
Right, we, you, you just may not surprise you, but. But the, the city of Beacon has over five thousand tax parcels. We pick them up every week. Wouldn't surprise you that there are some people, they have a party or some event. And they end up with an extra bag and they, and we handle that. That is to be distinguished if you had an extra bag or two every single week or three times a month. Then, then that's kind of abusing the, you know, the, the bid was drawn. Quite precisely with it, it's volume based and. But we will accommodate that for sure. That just won't be a problem.
Okay, and just further along, and this is a little bit more the philosophical. Thing, and I might not be around for this, and a lot of us might not be around at this, but the fact that there are. Established. Container sizes. Hopefully will lead us in the future to a more fee-based structure where somebody who doesn't create trash. Is charged less than somebody who creates a lot. And that's an environmental. Stand as well for the, maybe it's a future village government, but I just want to put that stake in the ground now. As a, as a vision for the future for not only the village, but, you know, for all communities. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
Paul Thompson.
Thank you, thank you. And Shelley, thank you so much. You, you kind of stolen my lead a little bit because I was going to make exactly the same point. Not so much that I would expect a reduction in my taxes because I don't create a lot of waste, but rather. I, I think that we should be thinking in terms of ways of encouraging. Village residents to reduce the amount of trash that they put out and maximize the amount of recycling. I will be a reluctant recipient of a sixty-five gallon. Wheelie bin, simply because it takes me about a month to fill it right now. I do hope that, you know, going forward, the, the village residents, and I'm, I'm pretty certain many are on the same page. Will want to reduce their waste as much as possible. And I think any ways that we can go towards trying to encourage that would be most welcome. And just one final point, and that is in relation to, to food scraps. I know that the town is looking at the possibility of food scrap. Pickup where, well, not. Rather, a drop off where, where residents would take it to possibly to the tip or the, or the town dump. I just wonder whether sort of going forward that a food scrap pickup program might be something that could be on boarded further down the road.
In the, in the short term, Paul, where the village is at the table for those conversations. In fact, Karen Earl was in the office today. To talk about the food scrap program that Sustainable Phillips Town is putting up in cooperation with the town board. And we will encourage, certainly encourage village residents to be part of that. As well, and I think the long-term goal of that program is talking about curbside pickup. And I think that Royal is, has participates in, in compost pickup in other communities. Is that right, Jim?
Yeah, we, Royal Karting was the. There's a couple of minor exceptions, but we are the only company. I refer to conventional garbage company that provides. Compost. Pickup, food waste pickup. We do it for a number of the universities and colleges. In the valley. And some of the. Elizabeth's. My daughter Elizabeth was in prep school in Connecticut, and she got her school. To hire one of our sister companies to do that, the, the composting. We, in the city of Beacon. It's a big issue. Here's, I'll take two seconds on compost. I don't need to waste a lot of time there. Just give me two seconds.
Thanks.
The. Food waste, okay. Your waste makes energy, the, 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 it's a, it's a waste to energy plant. That's where it goes. That's where it'll go, whether it goes to the one in Poughkeepsie or it goes to the one in Westchester. States like Maryland, and a byproduct of that burning process. Is an ash that is an inert ash. And it is used as cover material. In landfills. So instead of taking item four or some virgin material. And putting them in, in a land, to cover waste in a landfill, they get to use the ash. States like Maryland treat that as a hundred percent recyclable process. Not New York, but, but there are some, Maryland is one and there are others. Now. The compost is actually food waste is not helpful to that process. Because it doesn't produce BTU quality, it's wet. And you want to take the compost out of the garbage. So you're killing two birds with one stone. You're increasing your BTU quality and energy production. And at the same time, if you're composting and creating. Fertilizers and other products that can be used. For other uses, commercial uses, this is, this is a good solution. Problem there is infrastructure, Mr. Thompson. Where to bring the material, it has to be managed very carefully. And you need bulking materials like leaves and sticks and other, so there's, there's a whole process to take. Food waste. We did a couple of pilots in the city of Beacon. We, we purchased containers. So how do you get the compost to the curb? We purchased containers that had a little handle on them, big enough that you could put. If you chose to on your kitchen counter or underneath the sink. And you, and we sent a, we use a rendering truck to pick up compost, not a garbage truck. It's a special kind of truck. And we picked up, we picked a couple of neighborhoods and we distributed the cans for free. We did it. The production level was. Was very, very low. And it's problematic because. That material cannot be in a state of putrescence when you pick it up. So it's got to be picked up frequently. Some of the colleges, we pick up daily or every other day. So it's, it's, it's coming for reasons that, but I think I, I made the comment that it's not about the money, it's about the money. When it becomes economically feasible, you'll be surprised. Investment will make it happen and we'll have infrastructure. And curbside may be available. Drop off, I think I heard that was the term, having a. A vessel to receive the material. At the moment, it means somebody's got to drive up there and put their material there. For communities is, is probably the most. Efficient way. But again, that material's got to be picked up within a few days, particularly obviously in the summer months. And then, of course, in the winter months, you don't want the material to freeze within the can. So you, it's. You know, if we were in California where they, they do this much more efficiently than we do, and we had that kind of weather, we could pull it off a little better. But that, that's just a little background on composting and Royal's been doing it for. My goodness, over ten years for sure.
Yeah, many thanks, Jim.
Paul, I hope you'll stay engaged with that conversation because I think, Jim, you'll see that. Phillips Town and Cold Spring, when they set, set their minds to doing things like this, they do. Move forward at a decent pace. And I know that's, that's, it's a goal to get a drop-off site first and then move toward. Street pickup. And there is a villager who's on the, the team. That's looking into that as a lead, Eric Brown on Parsonage Street is. As part of the lead in that conversation.
The drop-off. Discussions we've had with other municipalities would be providing thirty-five gallon carts. The material's very heavy. Municipal solid waste, the kind that you put out, household waste typically could weigh. I don't know, seventy-five, eighty pounds a cubic yard. Compost could weigh. Well over two hundred, two hundred fifty pounds a yard. That, that's very heavy and because it's wet and. And the, the, the containers have to be lined. Because you don't want it just sitting in a. The plastic cart. And we use corn-based liners, which are also compostable. And so the labor involved is. That the cart would get loaded, we pull the liner out and replace the liner. And we want to do that because we don't want the liner falling down. We, the material, the, the quality of the material. It's food waste. But for it to become, to be composted, has to be actually rather precise. And these are some of the steps in the procedure. I'm sorry, Mayor, I got off on a tangent.
Something that folks in Cold Spring are, some folks in Cold Spring are very excited about. So we look forward to developments there. Are there other members of the public who have questions for Mr. Costantino? Ed Curley has his hand raised. I think you, you're muted, Ed.
Hi, sorry about that. Okay, I had a question about all the sub-course. It seems like there's, there's considerable sub-cost. With, with, with the decorting. For individual households or, or buildings. How much is too much? You know, say, you know, second terms of recycling, putting it out. Will there be a list at all? A list of additional costs that, that might be incurred? And also, again, I think the second question is. How is it going to be regulated if someone puts out a little too much? How do we really know what's too much? You know, say, for instance, I, I mean, it's a multi-dwelling with five apartments and a commercial property as well. And we all put the recycling out, you know, together on time. But it's hard to determine what comes from. You know, think what recycling comes from, what. Neighbor or whatever, we just. Put it all together, we box up all the cardboard or wrap it up and tie it up and put it out. We have the containers that we normally put out right now. And that's just the way it's been done. And. You know, this is the Cold Spring sanitation folks have been really gracious in just taking everything. You know, taking everything away. And also, you have mentioned that there would for things like sofas, broken furniture. Things like that. Often, you know, say those are put out. On garbage night. They're broken up, you know, like a cabinet might be broken up and it will be put out. You know, say, old, you know, say, pieces of furniture will be put out. And in the past, the cold meat sanitation has just. Taken it away. So. You know, it's like you had said that, that it comes, you're, you're planning on doing it once a month. Without, you know, like a lot of places and, and don't have storage to put any of this stuff. Can, sure, now it'd be taken along with the garbage. Is there a number that can be called, you know, say, to come and pick up, say, for instance, a, a disposed of. Sofa and, you know, and if so, you know, is there going to be an additional course? You know, say for that kind of stuff, you know, it's, and, you know, and I'm also concerned with, you know, like, may, Cold Spring is, is basically, it's. A large part of the, of Cold Spring is the main street. And. I've gone up and down Cold Spring streets on, on a recycling day. And in the evenings, there's a considerable amount of garbage. And, you know, so can I, you know, so you, you mentioned the ninety-five, you know, say, gallon container, which is large. But when you have, you know, like the majority of the stores on Cold Spring that do delivery, they receive all these, all these deliveries. And that's a lot of cardboard and recyclable materials that are left on the side. You know, it's like I've seen them blow off, blow, blow around, you know, it's a lot. To, to take away. And it seems to me that. It's going to end up being. The sub-course are going to end up being a business within a business here. You know, it's going to be taxing to. To the, to the, to the owners, to the store owners, business owners. You know, it's like. House owners, you know, anyone who receives and, 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 and set out a lot of. You know, like materials, you know, it's like it seems that they're going to be burdened a lot more than they've ever been. With any additional cost. Now, that, that is to say, again, I don't know what the courses are going to be. But they've never had to experience, we've never had to experience this before. And, you know, thinking I'm very concerned about what the course are going to be and how it's going to be regulated. Because it seems to be, you know, it's like a logistical nightmare to me just listening. And I, and, 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 and I do appreciate your candor and, and being forthcoming with, with everything, but, you know, it's like, I, I'm trying to. Figure this out, you know, how would that work?
Let's give, let's give Jim an opportunity. There are two questions there. One is regarding cost and one is regarding logistics. So maybe we can start with the logistics question, Jim.
Well, I think it's all related, Mayor. Here's an example. You, you're, if you wanted to double the size of your recyclables. You wanted to go to, you wanted an extra cart for recycling, double it. Talking about a lot of, that's a equivalent of four garbage cans plus. A week, it's five dollars more a month. That's your bid price. So. There will be some circumstances where someone will need. To double, they have a lot of recycling or cardboard and. So that's the kind of pricing that's there. If someone wanted to double. Their garbage pickup. They wanted to double, double what they're, they're getting now. The cost is going to be nineteen ninety-five a month. It's about, it's less than five dollars a week. To double your capacity. Those, those prices were. Those those prices were part of the bid, obviously a concern for not obvious, most of the properties will be fine. What you've described um currently is is exactly what we we run into in all our other municipalities. I can tell you, we will not pick up bulk waste. We dispose of bulk waste differently than we dispose of municipal solid waste. And while the highway department, I think, has been very generous with their services that they've they've rendered, what we were asked to bid on is what we, the service we will provide at the volumes we have been asked to propose. So if if there is a situation, a and he- here's examples, there's solutions to all of this. We gotta gotta get a little bit of time under our our belt here, but um if it's a matter of bulk waste and if the highway department and the the board felt, well, you know, why don't we cite a container at, I I'm sorry, I'm not trying to talk you people into anything or not. But if it was a question of, hey, can we have a place where we can get rid of furniture and other materials that we've always put out at the sidewalk? It's easy enough, I think, um to put Mr. Downey a a container, maybe you can fit one down at the highway department and accommodate you folks and figure out how to do that. But the process here doesn't, wouldn't accommodate that. If there's extra garbage that ha- you have an idea, and and so you could double the amount of your service for uh twenty, uh double the amount of the service for twenty-four dollars a month. Which I would tell you is probably um about a forty percent discount over the retail rate. If you were just living in one of the unregulated, you know, uh in in one of the other towns, i- is a significant discount for the service. Whether you're gonna like that or not, I I'm sorry, that's, I'll leave that up to the mayor and the board to figure out how to make you happy, but um but that's kind of how it was was bid. Recycling was so important to, in all of my discussions with all of the board members, but and and that they wanted to be able to offer the, they wanted that that significant increase in recycling to be really cost effective. And you know, you're 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 dealing at it for an extra dollar a week, you get an extra uh an extra container. We thought that was, we thought that was pretty efficient. So I don't know if I've answered your questions, but I try to give you some sense of of how it works with us.
And can you talk about the um the serial numbers that are on the bins? Ed Ed asked a question of how do how do we know, how do we know who's putting too much? If there are a series of bins put out by one building, how do we know who's who's the one putting out more?
Well, we don't, that's an interesting question. We we don't have that problem. Recurring problem in in other municipalities. We're not going to be the garbage police. I'm sorry, our our men uh got enough to do. But if you, you know, if you feel that somebody's using your container improperly or we or we see we're picking up a location and there's six carts out and and five bags of garbage, then you'll get contacted. I'm sorry, probably fall on the highway department or or somebody and say, you gotta, you know, somebody's got to figure out what it is and who's responsible. We we're not going to be able to provide police-like services. I'm sorry, Mayor, that that wasn't part of.
No, I'm not expert, certainly not expecting you to, but I think that uh we had a discussion that the bins are assigned, they're, the bins are assigned to a household. Yes?
Yes, that's correct. And right. So we we will, we will be able to track that.
Then Kathleen, just one comment. Um the the town of Phillips Town does operate a recycling center on Lane Gate.
That's right.
Does take um couches, it takes white goods, it takes, it takes all kinds of things. Um Bob Flaherty from the town board at next week's village meeting is going to talk about the recycling center in detail. Uh because I think it's a little bit of um an unknown to a lot of village residents.
Yep.
Um he's going to talk about that specifically. And also, there's a link to the town uh recycling page on our website under garbage, um which you will then be able to see everything that they do take, their hours, et cetera, et cetera. Uh but Bob's going to talk about that next week. And then on that same link is also all the extra uh pricing as it relates to the bins that Jim was referencing. So all that stuff is all on the website.
Thanks, Joe. Are there other members of the public who have questions for Mr. Constantino? I I hear I hear Jeff attempting to call in Bugsy.
Bugsy?
Okay, I have a question. Uh concerning brush pickup. Will it have to be put in a cart? And if not, how much of it will you accept and what will you accept? Bag leaves, I understand, but stumps, roots, things like that. Um some residents put out close to fifty, sixty bags for brush collection. Is that something that will be acceptable?
I'm going to give you the lawyer's perfect response. I don't know exactly. Let me, let me say, we don't have any issues. We we when we, the brush collection didn't specify a volume. So I expect that we do pick up that those sorts of green, that's what we refer to with is green wa- waste in other communities. I don't think it's going to be an issue, as long as that's all it is, is if it is truly green waste. And somebody puts out, you know, uh sure, uh leaves and uh bags and uh we just pick it up. And so I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I will have your contract administrator discuss. I'll get back to you on that. Um Elizabeth, make a note, please. Um get back to you on that, just to give you some comfort. That we're not going to drive by one house, leave twenty bags of leaves, and then go pick up the, you know, the ones that have two bags. That's that's not the process. We we, it says brush pickup, it didn't specify a volume and given, unless people are importing it, we have an idea of the kinds of volumes places produce. It's 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 finite. It's not, you know, you you may think the village of Cold Spring is unique that way. I we we think it probably won't be, and that's why feeling pretty comfortable, you're not going to have any issue with that.
Okay, no, I mean, I I I was just curious on, the residents are very good about their brush um and how they put it out. Uh leaves are bagged, uh brush sticks are bundled four foot lengths. Um if they do have a larger piece of like a a stump or a root, it's kept separate. Uh very rarely do you see dirt or rocks. The residents are excellent about that. I was just worried because I know there are a few residents, very few, that are overachievers and put out about anywhere from fifteen to seventy-five bags. But it's very rare, though.
Understand, and and the the way this works, this won't surprise anyone. And there'll be residents that don't put anything out.
Correct.
So you you, given the anticipated balance, it it's not, I just don't see it being an issue, but I appreciate you raising it with us.
Oh, good.
You run into that concept, that that issue regularly and and it it for our, from our standpoint, it it ends up balancing out.
That will be something that Royal will help us communicate with villagers on, right, in terms of we communicate what what Bugsy's requirements have been about lengths and and tie and tying, et cetera. You'll be, you'll help us communicate to villagers how you would like brush prepared for pickup.
But my in my initial response is you're, to the greatest extent possible, we hope you don't do have to do anything different than you've been doing. That that's the, that's the sense of trying to make it seamless. If what you've described uh sounds perfectly acceptable and nobody's got to do anything extraordinary, um which you, what you've just described, I think will work just fine.
Jeff, were there other hands raised?
Heidi?
We have a Nelsonville neighbor. Hello, Heidi.
Hi, hi. I'll be there really quick. I realize I don't live in Cold Spring, and I just wanted to make a very quick comment and ask a question. We have Royal in Nelsonville, and they're fabulous in terms of the quality, the service, the very courteous nature of the the guys who pick up the the um about the uh bins, et cetera. And I have nothing but great things to say about the efficiency and the terrific qualities of the service. My one question is that I've noticed walking through Cold Spring that it seems like you guys separate your recycling and we just throw it in a bin, one bin. I mean, I, my understanding is, and this is partly from my experience in the city, that separating recycling is a lot better than just throwing everything in one bin, that it a lot less can be recycled that way. Um and I'm just wondering if, you know, if there's something being lost in just throwing all the paper, glass, uh plastic, everything in one bin as opposed to some sort of separation that could take place.
Just for for clarity, in the village, it is single stream recycling.
Okay.
People may, people may opt
Okay.
To separate their cardboard and put it in a different bin, but it all ends up in the same.
I see. Okay, my mistake. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Jim, you maybe can answer the rest of the question.
Well, I I do want to respond um to your your comment about recycling being lost. So in Duchess County, our source, they they came out, it was nineteen ninety, there was the source source separation law. That was when recycling was just beginning, curbside. Carters were required to offer the service, paper had to be separated from co-mingled and plastics. Took a generation, which if you want to think of that as twenty years or fifteen years, say fifteen years, for people to really get that down. And the the statement was always, when in doubt, throw it out. Don't throw something into the recycling that's going to contaminate the recycling. That that was more the concern, quality of recycling. Then, and the Europeans were doing this ten years before the United States got into the Act fifteen, maybe, a single stream recycling. If you make recycling easy and you make it convenient, and that's why we put the instructions on top of the cart, they're laminated. You don't know whether you should, wh- what should I do with this? If you don't see it, just better you throw it out than you contaminate the recycling. The volumes increased phenomenally. The mayor made the comment, we used to get paid for your recycling. Um because the demand for the material, for recyclables, particularly from our friends in China, was overwhelming. And when single stream came out, uh and here we were, what happened? The volume of recycling, quality recycling um at the at the uh increased so dramatically that what happened, the demand, the supply greatly outpaced the demand. And we now are in a position where we're actually paying to get rid of single stream recycling. There are contamination issues. That was uh one of the reasons they say that the, that the market changed was contamination issues. That's a different issue. But I I I know this because I've I've been through this process, the single stream. Um the city of Beacon, when we went single stream with the city of Beacon, they changed their recycling from uh every week to every other week because they, given the volume that they were getting, the volume increased so dramatically, they do it every week now. So I I I really want to assure you that a single stream recycling, as long as the quality, if if and and if the residents just follow the instructions, that material goes to a fac- the facility in Beacon, s- state-of-the-art separation through a series of fans and conveyor belts and separators. Everything that can be recycled is is recycled into, you know, fifteen, twenty different waste streams. It can be very efficient. And 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 so I, you're you're not losing anything by uh volume-wise and by single stream.
Thank you so much. Thanks for hearing me. Thank you.
Any other members of the public with questions on this portion, Jeff?
Um, not that looks like it's it.
Okay, well, let's um release Mr. Constantino. And Elizabeth, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for addressing everyone's questions. Um there are a couple of points I think we need to come back to and um further conversations, and Joe and I will follow up with that. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for inviting us. And if there are any follow-up questions, Mr. Trustee Curdo, just let us know and we'll I know I owe a few answers back, the brush and some other things, but just just feel free to call.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to, we're, we've been talking about Joe Curdo a lot. Um Joe and Tweeps have been working on this project together, but there's probably no one now anywhere who knows more about garbage than than Joe. Um so we'll we'll turn the portion of the program over to him now.
Thank you, Kathleen. Um so I'll get into a little bit of the minutia of this. Uh we'll go through some of it pretty quickly because we've been discussing this um at almost every meeting, and it's all publicly on our website, but we'll kind of just walk through it, you know, quickly so everybody sees it. Uh first off, just to, you know, reiterate again, and I know you mentioned it from the start, that uh this wasn't necessarily our idea. We picked up on what was started by the prior administration, and they did an enormous amount of legwork to get us to this point. So not to use a football analogy, they took us to the red zone and we're going to try to take it into the goal line.
Joe?
Um.
Joe? Can can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know who's showing this this um screen. Is that, is that Jeff?
Yes.
Can you zoom in? My glasses, I couldn't see. Thank you.
Yeah, that should be good.
Thanks, Tweeps.
So I just wanted to thank the prior administration, uh then trustee Foley, uh Phillips, uh Fran Murphy, Marie Early, and Dave Mirandi. Um they did a lot of work on this. Uh Stephanie Hawkins, who helped draft the bid documents, put a lot of time in. So just to kind of give them a little kudos for helping us get to this point. This isn't something we just created. Um so I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that. Um just to go through this really quickly. So as was mentioned previously, uh the village put out a bid process. Uh those bids came in, it was discussed at the November twenty-third Village Board Meeting. Uh and if every, anyone is interested, go to the YouTube video of that meeting, the first ten minutes does a description of some of this. So you can hear it from different voices, uh but it's pretty informative. But in summary, uh Royal carding uh was the low bidder. Um the second lowest was city carding. Uh and if you look at the numbers, and I'll just summarize real quick, uh Royal carding was about half the cost of the second low bidder, which was city carding. Uh and in talking to Jim Constantino and his group, um they really bid this thing close to the best. Um and if I understand it correctly, it's even well below the New York State contract price, which Michelle will talk about a little bit. Um so they really bid this aggressively and uh they know the village and they they seem to want this account. And um I have no reason to doubt that they won't do a good job executing it if, in fact, this does happen. But this is kind of a quick summary of what the bids came out, um so everybody can see that. And Jeff, if you can move to the next, I'll quickly kind of just walk through the bid and the numbers. So on the village website, you will actually see the full bid document, which is about seventy pages. Uh it lists all the terms, conditions, the parcels, the exhibits, um and anything you want to know about the bid. It's all on that document. Um you will also see Royal's bid, which was the low bid, uh which is a little bit more of an elaborate version of that. But it also has pricing on it, and I'll kind of go through this really quickly. So the bulk of the bids was what's called the annual fee, which is the so-called meat and potatoes of the garbage service. It's six hundred and thirty-five tax parcels. Uh the annual fee to that is a hundred and ninety thousand, one nineteen. Uh that's the same pickup uh parameters that the village currently does, once a week for garbage uh and once a week for recycling. Uh that also includes uh twice a week on Main Street, it includes the parks, um it includes a few other items in there. Just below those numbers, you will see the costs of additional bins. This relates to someone who wants to buy an additional service uh because ninety-five gallon may not serve their purpose. They may want a second ninety-five gallon. Uh that would be nineteen ninety-five, and that includes the service and the bin. This also rate would apply if we are adding new service parcels. This also rate would apply if we are adding new service parcels uh, throughout the year. So for instance, if there's a parcel that's not identified in the bid, uh, maybe it, it didn't exist as of the time the bid was drafted. Uh, this is the rate that Royal would charge us for it, and we would obviously either absorb it or pass that on to the consumer, depending on if it's a new service or uh, it's an add-on service. So that's what those rates are. Um. The additional collections, the board had asked them to consider what is referenced as Sunday morning pickup, which is that third pickup for Main Street. Currently, the village picks up Main Street three times. Um, and this would also apply to uh, some of the parks in general. And Jim made reference to an addendum to the documents, which we're having conversations about, of fine tuning some of the little nuances. Uh, so for instance, the Tot Park wasn't included in the original bin. We put that in as an addendum and they priced that out separately. And all these little addendum numbers, plus or minus, come out to very small uh, dollars and cents. Um, but they weren't included in the bid. So that's what Sunday morning is referencing. Brush uh, has a flat rate for a pickup schedule, which comes out to twelve pickups. We did ask Royal to give us a supplementary price, which will be on the addendum if we wanted to add to that. So if we wanted to go from twelve to fourteen, or fourteen to sixteen, or sixteen to seventeen, they'll have a number for that. All he's asking for is some uh, lead time and some structure to that system. So we don't call him on Friday and say, Jim, can you, you know, can you pick up brush on Saturday? You know, he wants a system to that. Uh, but we did ask for some alternatives. Uh, we go down to bulk peak, bulk pickup, which is Village Cleanup Day. Uh, that's a one-time-a-year situation that's currently not formally offered. Uh, though there is an informal basis, and one of the things that we're also trying to get to is to kind of minimize some of the informalities in the village and make them a little bit more formal. Um, just meaning that if I'm entitled to something, sure. If I'm really not entitled to something, but I've always had it because that's just the way things used to be. Um, those are conversations I think there are ultimately gonna have to happen. Uh, Christmas tree pickup is included, uh, same situation. If we wanted an additional pickup, there would be an addendum rate for that. Uh, and then we get back to those additional services of adding uh, extra bins, and they're any combination of above. So me being a habitual garbage person, I may say, you know what, I'm going ninety-five gallon because that's what's included. I may want an extra sixty-five gallon. Uh, I might be good on recyclables, or I may say I want two recyclables and one, these are kind of like what you would call à la carte pricing. Uh, one thing that we have looked at, and I looked at uh, pretty extensively, is there are some communities that are going to this um, uh, fee-based system um, for the purpose of covering administrative costs, as well as once there's a fee associated with garbage, garbage tends to decrease in volume. Um, that's pretty much a, a given study in the garbage world. Uh, we're not there yet, I think, and this just might be an incremental piece to get us to a future step. Uh, but it is something that's out there in other communities, and it ranges from all kinds of numbers. Poughkeepsie charges, they put it on the water bill. Uh, the Village of Wappingers charges, it's a one-time fee. Fish Gill charges, it's a bi-monthly fee. Uh, so there are a lot of variations of that. I'm not quite sure that Cold Spring is ready for that type of change. And that's. And that's kind of your bid. Uh, the rest of it really deals more with uh, dumping fees. Uh, you know, as they've referenced, and Michelle will talk a little bit about this, of what we spend in our dumping fees for both refuse and recyclables. Um, but that's the bulk of the overview of the bid. You can go to the website. You can see um, all the details that go into this stuff. So there's really nothing that we're trying to hide or cover. It's all there. Um, you know, if you wanted to go through the nitty-gritty details of some of this, it's all there for you to take a look at. So that's kind of uh, that piece. Um, I just wanted to go through it so that, you know, people heard it and saw it, um, though we have commented that on prior meetings. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Michelle, who's gonna kind of talk about a little bit of the nuts and bolts of the financial side. Uh, the boards through the years have always kind of looked at this and said, the numbers aren't really close enough to try to make this work. Uh, they seem to have gotten closer and closer. Uh, so I'll let Michelle kind of comment on that. And then we're gonna turn it over to Bugsy, uh, who's the Highway Crew Chief, and he's gonna talk a little bit about what a post-garbage highway department may look like and what really can get done in, in this village. This whole concept, in my opinion, is less about garbage than about what we can actually really start getting done systemically and visually in the village uh, with a highways department who's not bogged down with just picking up garbage. And it's hard to imagine unless you see it. And in my seven weeks on the board, the amount of energy and time and aggravation that comes just with garbage behind the scenes is absolutely mind-boggling. And there's a, and these guys work so hard. And I think Bugsy will kind of put it in context as to what they can really get done in this village that's visual and that's functional and that's maintenance and that's preventative maintenance that really will make a difference. I don't know anyone who's moved to the village because their garbage got picked up, but I do, and a lot of people who've lived here because of sidewalks and what they see and what they feel walking through our village. And I think this is just one step to a larger conversation that we're gonna have. Um, so I'll turn this over to Michelle, and you can kind of walk us through some of this.
Okay, uh, thank you. So on the screen, um, um, there's a side-by-side comparison. So Joe just walked through the bid, um, which is the left side Royal's bid. Uh, so if we take all those numbers on that Royal bid on, including bulk collection, uh, we're about two hundred and sixteen thousand. Um, that's twelve brush collections, Main Street three times a week, um, and everything that's listed in the exhibits. Um, so the way that I've been looking at this now is it's a swap from things that are currently in the budget. You know, so if you take what's been budgeted for the garbage and recycling, um, disposal costs, um, instead of refuse, that should say disposal costs, it's like eighty-nine thousand budgeted, just to dispose of all the village's trash. And then you have, you know, truck maintenance and fuel, uh, the extra service on Main Street on Sundays, uh, and then some salaries and benefit savings. So you're looking at two sixteen on both sides. What's not in the equation is that we do need a new truck. Um, we looked at in the past, you know, just buying a cabinet chassis and using an existing compactor um, with a little bit of inflation and the way rates we've seen, we're saying, looking at approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand for that. Um, and then you have the supply chain issues for that. Uh, so that one twenty-five might be more due to supply chain issues, but it's, you're not gonna get a truck overnight. Um, so I've heard someone ask before, you know, what does it do to your taxes? Um, Royal contract specifically, um, is not causing an increase to the tax and it's not causing um, a, a rate for the residents to pay Royal for their basic service. You know, Jim had talked about the add-on service as a separate, um, but everybody listed in that exhibit online um, gets garbage service included, as if nothing had changed. Um, so to Jim's point, and uh, Joe mentioned it before, for, for pricing, Jim said, what happens when the contract is over? And there is two things. One, we can always bid it out again. There's only a handful of garbage providers in the area. Um, but if we want to, after, you know, say, two, three years when the contract's over, you just do the same process all over again. Um, the other option is New York State, if we use their bid process, Royal and AAA are New York State vendors. There's a maximum that they can charge per pickup, per container. Um, Royal did come in significantly cheaper than that cap that the state has put on it. Um, but just, it's, there's comforting to know there is a cap. Um, so the cap right now, it's nine dollars uh, pickup for garbage and Jim came in at four dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, recycling cap is four fifty-seven, a pickup, um, so figure once a week for fifty-two weeks. And uh, as they said, it's a dollar a week. Um, so the rates, they are very competitive, um, and for the way I see it, it's a wash in the budget, um, so nothing's gonna really change. Um, and I don't know if, you know, uh, trustee Curdo or anybody else wanted to add anything on the finances.
Just one thing to add is, um, the way the bid was drafted, this would be a one-year agreement with a village option for year two and a village option for year three. So in the event year one goes by and we realize that, you know what, this wasn't quite what we thought it was going to be. Our obligation is one year. And it's our option to renew for year two, and it's our option to renew for year three. Uh, based on the other municipalities that we've spoken to, once they've made the change, they're not necessarily going back to doing it because they're realizing the benefits of all the other things that they can be focusing on rather than just garbage. But we do have that provision in the contract where if something does radically go unplanned, we can, it's a one-year agreement.
Okay.
So let's go to Bugsy. Bugsy is the Highway Crew Chief. Uh, I had a Zoom call with Bugsy about a week ago and I said, listen, if we can get garbage off your back and you could stop thinking about garbage, what is it you could actually do with the crew that you currently have? And he went on for a while about the crew and how he's really excited about some of the guys and how they're interested in learning different things and they're looking to do what I call professional development. And we had a half-hour conversation and he was excited. I was excited. I picked up the phone. I called Mayor Foley. I said, you know what? This really can be a great opportunity for the village to really get a lot of stuff done, but we just gotta get this thing off their backs because it's just an absolute headache that's bogging the village down on a daily basis. So I'm gonna let Bugsy kind of walk us through some of his thoughts and ideas. So Bugsy, you ready? Get a good night's sleep?
Yeah, I'm ready as I'll ever be.
Good.
Uh, how you doing, folks? Um, Robert Downey, Village Cold Spring Highway Department Crew Chief. Um, when I first heard they were looking to get rid of garbage, y'all, change is scary. It's not something I was used to. Um, as Joe was saying, right now, I'm putting about fifty-five to sixty percent of my thought and my energy into garbage. Um, trying to keep up with the trucks, trying to get them to go through each week. And that's sixty percent of my time that could definitely be used um, in infrastructure. Sidewalks are a definite issue that we can now really start focusing on and getting done. Um, our drainage systems, catch basins, another area that has been neglected just because, like it was said earlier, we are on garbage minimum of two and a half to three days a week. Now, those two and a half and three days each week can now be put to a much better cause, which is our sidewalks, our drainage, our infrastructure, our building maintenance, um, and just general beautification around the village. Um, we are all very excited at the Highway Department. The guys are breathing a little easier. Um, I, I've done a lot of different work. For those of you who know me my whole life, I've done some hard work in my life. Garbage is by far the most taxing on the body. To get rid of this and recycling will definitely open us up to just getting the general needs done around the village, and it'll be so much better for the residents because this is what, this is where they choose to live. They love this beautiful village, and we're gonna make it completely safe. And just put all our concentrated efforts into a much better product and a much better infrastructure.
Thank you, Bugsy.
Well said. So I will defer back to Mayor Foley.
Well, I would like first to ask if trustees have questions on this second portion, the presentations by Joe and Michelle and Bugsy, before we open it to the public.
I, I don't have any questions. I can only say thank you guys so much for um, being on top of everything and doing your best. And Bugsy, I'm really excited for you in the voice to get to do something other than trash.
Yeah, no, it, it was great working with the board on this. They've had our backs the whole way. They understand even things that most people don't see. And between Mayor Foley, Joe Curdo, yourself, Catherine, and Tweeps, you guys have really had our backs and we really appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate you very much. It's been a long, it's been a long few weeks. Um, we're looking forward to thinking about other things. We've got all sorts of things to do, good stuff to do. Um, so.
One point.
Go ahead, Joe.
I put together a little Q and A document, which we'll put up on the website, which is kind of repetitive, some of of what we've spoken about and what Jim had spoken about. But I think it'll be something good to go back to when everybody goes back to their normal lives later on tonight or tomorrow. And just take a look at it. It kind of answers a lot of these questions that we probably will have, but maybe didn't think to ask. So I, take a look at it. It'll be up on the website hopefully tomorrow. Um, and I think it'll just help the process uh, and the learning curve uh, for everybody.
Thanks. All right. With no being put forward by the trustees, do members of the public have questions on this portion, finance uh, process? What's next for the Highway Department?
Donald?
Um, thank you. Donald McDonald, Ten B Street. So I, I just want to make sure the what, the way I, the way I, what I heard was that for no, any kind of appreciable tax increase, we're gonna get the, the, our village highway department is gonna be able to work three days more a week on village infrastructure rather than doing garbage. So it's a, it's a win. We, we, our garbage remains to be picked up, no problem, and we actually get uh, three days more a week um, um, of our e- e- efforts out of our, our village highway department. Is that uh, an accurate, pretty accurate statement?
Yes, I believe it is.
That's very, yes.
You're a hundred percent accurate now.
That's a wonderful thing. Thank you very much for all your efforts. I much appreciate that.
Thank you, Donald.
Wonderful presentation, too.
Matt?
Hi. Yes, a couple of things, actually. Um, thank you all for doing the work and obviously the previous administration that, that put this together. I know they've been looking at this uh, forever. Um, to, to Shelley and Paul's point, I mean, you know, this um, it, it just kind of is kind of nauseating to me to think we're kind of guiding folks towards, you know, a ninety-five gallon container because it will make their lives easier. I mean, Shelley's a friend, so she will not mind what I talk about her. I mean, she's really, she's kind of disincentivized. Even Shelley, who's producing, you know, a gallon or two a week, is incentivized to take a sixty-five gallon, you know. So even the savings that the village would incur on a thirty-five gallon tank are not, are not passed through to anyone. The re, the village doesn't realize those savings and Shelley, I believe, is incentivized, as she said, to then take a larger container, which we pay a larger per cost. And you know, with, you know, kind of human behavior, as Jim had said from, you know, from Royal, you know, it's, it's a positive example. When you talk about the recycle, they'll fill it up more, there'll be more. Well, they'll do the same thing with garbage. Um, you know, so there's kind of a regression to the mean and human behavior that I think is kind of important and look, it's a very, it's a very complicated issue. Um, I, if there's just kind of a way to look at it to say, can you incentivize people to reduce their waste, right? Um, you know, as opposed to what we heard with Shelley, who is, you know, she is really on this zero waste stuff. And her solution is, well, gee, I guess I better take a larger can because sometimes I might need it, right? And then the village encourages those costs. Um, I know one of the, one of the comments was made that the town recycling center takes furniture and mattresses. They don't. According to their website, they don't. I have not known them to. So it might be helpful to consider in the budget that, you know, that something could be done for that. Because even if they did take it, the reality of it is people probably don't have a vehicle, you know, to haul that stuff anyway. Um, and then finally, you know, so the treasure states that there's no tax increase and frees up the highway department to work on all these other things. And it's, then it's kind of a, you know, it's, it's a wash, right? It's a swap. I, is under that no tax increase, has all the materials, you know, for this, for this work? I mean, it would be great to see the sidewalks, you know, repaired and the curbs. I mean, it would be great to see the sidewalks, you know, repaired and the curbs and the aprons, but obviously concrete's, concrete's expensive. Is there no tax increase also with all the materials that Bugsy will need? You know, to, to make the place, you know, to get, to get it into shape and do the deferred maintenance?
There's no specific taxes for Royal Services. It's just a transfer in kind from Bugsy's crew to that same kind. But it hasn't been yet in for next year. Tax increases may be on the table for other things. Everything goes up. But specifically, we don't raise more dollars to pay for Royal because it's a one to one. But the tax, you know, question will at budget time, which we're getting into in the next couple of weeks.
I mean, one way, I guess, to look is whether we do the garbage or whether Royal does the garbage and whether we contract the stuff out that, there's work that has to be done in the village. And just from walking through the village and some of the buildings and stuff, I've identified it a very decent chunk of money of stuff that really needs to get done ASAP. I call it health, safety, priority one, which is liability issues. And that stuff's got to get done, whether we keep garbage, whether we don't keep garbage, whether we can do it or whether we subcontract, contract it out. It's been ignored and it has to get done. Now, if we can do it in-house on some of these items and there's going to be a skill set where they're not going to be able to obviously do everything. But this is stuff that I think is a bigger question that we really need to start tackling and we just can't keep kicking the can. And, you know, it's just part of these conversations that we're going to have to have. And I think by just getting garbage out of the cloud of, of craziness, you can at least now have intelligent conversations and start putting plans together of what we can and what we can't get done internally and then externally and what that all means in the grand scheme of things.
Cap, excuse me, Joe. Capital project planning is something we need to dig into. We are digging into, but we need to dig into in-depth in the budget process and we need to be thinking in one-year plan, five-year plan, ten-year plan. And it has, it has to happen in the village to knock, to knock these long deferred items out of the way. Improve quality. Go ahead, Eliza.
I just want to respond to the idea of incentivizing product producing smaller amounts of trash versus larger amounts of trash. And I think that's a wonderful idea. However, when we're trying to transfer and just make a change that is absolutely necessary for us to move forward as a village and be able to have crosswalks, for instance. I think we'll hear a lot more people upset about us demanding that they pay to, you know, produce more trash, if they produce more trash, than right now by giving them the biggest option that will be the smoothest and easiest for the most residents to be okay with this new change. I think there are things that we as a community can do to encourage and move into that direction in the future. I know I've, I've been to many master composting classes. I know that Crystal Ford is interested in teaching that to the community. And I find that composting in my yard is the best way to do it and will reduce your, your trash that goes out a huge amount. The village has incentive because we're paying, as the list said, eighty-six dollars and forty-five cents a ton for the trash that they collect. So in the future, we may want to discuss that option if we see that the community wants it and wants to move in the direction of, you know, like I'll pay more for my bigger can versus the smaller can. If we hear that from enough residents, then I think that is a great idea.
Thank you, Eliza.
Paul Anderson?
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for, we're very clear presentation. Most of my questions are in response to things that Joe presented. And not, I'm not expecting answers right now. I'm just going to go through those questions. So first one is, is can you provide an explanation for the three-year limit on the, on the agreement? Second one is the commercial garbage pickup that is clearly separate from the residential. That's not part of this contract. Is that correct? The third one is bulk. Absolutely. Yes, I agree that with, with the comments that Matt made. My experience with the Phillips Town pickup is that actually it's never worked. I think one time I was able to actually leave a television there. And otherwise it's either out of schedule or they have changed their rules or something. So I would appreciate at least once a year included in that contract. I have a question about where the end deposit location for this refuse is. I don't know where it is currently. Does it go to Pennsylvania? Does it go to China? I have no idea. That would be helpful to know just as a concerned citizen. In terms of the balancing of the budget that Michelle was printed, presenting, I'm not quite clear about do the benefits to the village personnel go away? Or is that somehow reduced? Is there some repentance in the staff that, that provides a a benefit? I'm not quite sure how that equation works. In terms of incentivizing the recycling and particularly the compost, I have to admit to some very bad habits. I have a worm compost in the back and all of our non-citrus, non-alium and non-meat refuse goes to them and they've been very loyal to us. I don't know what the normal inclusion is in garbage, but that I have found to be a very successful solution. I also have to admit that I understand that when you put all of these products together, I still wash out all my vessels so that they're clean. I still don't put the pizza boxes in the cardboard and I still, as the person from Nelsonville noted, I still separate out cardboard and paper recycles from glass and plastic. And I know that it all goes in one truck. It didn't in the very beginning, but those are habits that I probably not going to be able to lose. That's not a question, but more of a statement. I also want to talk about the, the infrastructure. So sidewalks, I know that Marie Early and and, and various other people were involved in repairing sidewalks in the village and that was an incredible project. I know it was very challenging in part because it was, it was flagged specific to replacement. So I think it's a good idea to be able to go back in and do more of that, that sidewalk work. And then as far as Joe's comment about health and safety, I think, yes, there are a number of projects that we see around the village that really require attention. I am in no doubt that there are projects we can't see walking down the sidewalk that are also in need of attention. Thank you very much.
Would it be useful, Joe, to have Michelle address the, the benefits question at this point? That seems.
Sure.
Michelle.
I could take a stab at a couple of the things. The three-year contract was specified in the original bid, which is what they bid on. And it was a three-year agreement, one year with village option for years two and three. Why it was not longer than that, I don't know what the methodology was, but that's what was in the original bid and that's what they bid on. Regarding Phillips Town's recycling, Bob Flaherty's coming to our meeting next week. And I asked him if he could go into depth as to what they provide, how they provide it, what that process is. So maybe that would be helpful and maybe there's something they're thinking about that isn't posted on their website. You know, let's see what Bob has to say with regards to that. Where the garbage goes, I know the garbage, the refuse goes to the garbage to energy plant in Peak Scale, which burns into electricity, I believe. Recycling goes to Beacon to that recycling and I don't know where it goes from there, to be perfectly honest, but I'm sure we could find that one out. And then Michelle, if you want to touch base on the benefit piece.
Just to add to the burn plant, the, the village uses the one in Peak Scale. Royal may use the one in Peak Scale or there's one in Duchess County as well, but it's the same idea, same company. They burn the refuse, turn it to energy. Comment on the bulk real quick. And the numbers that we've been discussing, bulk is included for one time per year. So that's on the table. And then for the benefits, so nobody that is currently employed is losing their health insurance benefits, not like that. Currently there is a vacancy in the highway department that would not be filled. And then we would use the savings from that salary and those benefits to go towards the contract for Royal.
Thank you.
Does that, is that what you're looking for, Paul? Is that a suffice?
Thank you.
Steve Smith?
Good evening, all. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just, one of the questions was there on the, the line item for the budget with the hundred thousand dollar difference of the in the price comparison. It's three days worth of work or two and a half days, but the hundred thousand dollars. So that's, you're not replacing one position or benefit package or whatever. So that's a hundred thousand is what you're saying?
No, the included in that is one, is the one vacant position with the benefits package, taxes, pension, all that. There's currently in the budget, there was the idea that we might hire a part-time mechanic. That was a new position added in last year's budget for this year. But it has not been fulfilled, so we would eliminate that at this time. And then we have a CDL driver that helps out part-time. We wouldn't need him anymore twice a week. But what's been clear from the board at this point in time is although that it's a swap right now and we're not filling those vacant positions, it's not to say that the, the makeup of the highway department cannot increase down the road. This is just to get us there now. We're going to reevaluate. Bugsy's going to work on his projects. And then in, you know, sixty days, three months, six months, we'll see where the needs are and then address it again at that time.
Okay. And now, and then the other question, I know the, one garbage truck was totaled out. There's money for that replacement. And then the existing garbage truck that we still own, that would be sold. So there's money there for, to assist with the highway department upgrading equipment and everything, I'm assuming? Is that what we're looking?
So the truck, the highway truck is now, has now fully puked. It's last, its last major issue came up on Monday and needed a repair on the road. But to, to properly repair it is another fifteen thousand dollars on a machine that's already had so much dumped into it. And it's possible, I mean, we can certainly attempt to auction it. It's possible that someone would want it for parts. It does not have a lot of value. But we will certainly make an attempt to recover that cost to go toward other needed equipment, absolutely.
Yeah, all right. Well, I mean, Bugsy, we probably know best, but one of those bodies was just replaced not too long ago that we spent a lot of money on, I believe.
Bugsy, are you able to address that question? Do you still, is he still with us?
Yes, I'm here. Steve, yeah, that body was bought about eight, nine years ago. It is still in good shape. So in auction, yes, that would definitely bring more money. The garbage truck, surprisingly, even though the amazing amount of work it needs, the current one we're using, it would actually, it would show, a lot of people would see interest in that. Especially, you know, down in, you know, South America is, that's where our yellow salter went, which I didn't think anybody would want that.
You know, you're right, because I know that's where one of the fire trucks went is down in Argentina. And it still has Cold Spring Fire written on it and they use it. So, yeah, though, I mean, but I mean, I know the money's not great in the return on those, but I mean, it's something to help towards replacing or upgrading some of the stuff you needed, the highway or whatever.
Oh, absolutely. We had an auction recently this summer and got rid of a lot of equipment that we just do not use anymore, that was of no use to us and was honestly long past its living days here with, for the village of Cold Spring. And we actually got quite a decent return on that auction. Cleared up our space and that money goes right back into, you know, needs for the village, needs for the highway department.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure, like, we're going to use the money back into where you guys, you know, it's your equipment, your stuff there. That's where it should be going.
Yes, we'll squeeze every penny, every penny out of it that we can. We have plenty of other equipment that needs repair and replacement. And Bugsy will very much be at the table for those conversations as we look to a re-envisioned highway department and, and needs going forward.
Yeah, perfect. All right. Thanks all.
Jeff, is there anyone else that hand raised?
No.
Okay, so maybe we can talk a bit now about next steps. As I said, we are, we are absolutely without a garbage truck at this point. So we, we are out of options and replacing that garbage truck on any reasonable timeline is not on the table. I, I would like to ask trustees to, to give a sense of after all that we've learned, after all that we've heard, I would like to take this forward to, to resolution next week. And I want to get a sense of how people are feeling about, about that. Are the, right now, the contract, the, the, the village attorney is reviewing the modifications and the bid response and the contract. So we need feedback from him, obviously, to make sure that we're on the straight and narrow with contract. That has to happen first. But how are folks feeling about things tonight?
I just don't want to start blurting out. Honestly, I, the amount of work that has been done by, by everyone and the information that we have, I, I think we have enough to make an informed decision. I mean, I, barring any thing that comes up from the legal side, I, I mean, I think we, as you say, we're out of options anyway, but this, this is where I think we should go. I think it's an important step. And in that, just this little bit previously to, to this discussion, on that budget line, we didn't even put in what we're saving by not buying a truck. You know, it's, it's the weight for the truck and then the truck. So, you know, that's, that's not, we're saving that money doing this anyway. So I'd be barring any surprises, I would definitely be in favor of moving to Royal.
I would echo that sentiment, I think, just in hearing from Joe and, and you and Tweeps about how sort of outstanding and direct and easy to communicate with Royal is, they seem wildly professional. I have only heard great things about their service from people in the area. And we really are out of options, but I, I think, you know, or options that are easy to achieve. But I think this is a direction and I, and I don't really have any more questions. This presentation was great and really not something that most municipalities would provide necessarily, but I, I found it really helpful and I hope that the public did too.
Thanks. Sweeps, Joe, any additional comments?
Sure. I think I'm, after diving in into this garbage situation and not even to the level that Joe did, I am shocked that it's taken this long to get to the point of making this decision. This is, well, it, it makes so much sense. It's beyond time for us to be doing this. There's so much that needs to be done in this village. And these guys, this is their business. This is what they do. There's no question that, that they can do a good job. It has been seamless the times that they have been in the past couple of weeks. I'm sure most people don't even know that, that that's been the case. Being for this weekend. So I think, you know, yes, a hundred percent, let's move this forward. It's time. Obviously, the guys have a lot of other work to get, to attend to and it's time to do this.
Anything from you, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, just to kind of summarize quickly, quickly. I mean, I think we can do a better job and we should do a better job on the whole education campaign of refuse and recycling. That's something that I think, once we get this thing under our belt, you know, we can start that process as well. There's some pretty smart and creative people tonight who commented, who could maybe help us with that as an education campaign. So it's not just take anything you have and throw it in the dumpster kind of situation. I think we just, we have so many issues in this village that need to get addressed. There's some really big issues. I think we just, we have so many issues in this village that need to get addressed. And there's some really big issues. And I think we just have to start clearing out some of the low-lying fruit and garbage. No disrespect to anybody. I put my garbage out at night. It gets picked up. I put it back in the garage. I don't even think about it again until the following week. That's going to continue to happen in ninety-eight percent of the cases. These guys are really good at what they do and people have been raving about Royal as a service. I own buildings in Lower Westchester and I deal with carting companies and they're not like this. And I think we just have to start moving the needle forward a little bit. And I think this is just one small step in a very large walkway that needs to get addressed. And I think we can do it. It's smart. It's intelligent. And, you know, the highway guys can now show us what they can do. And I think they're gonna do some pretty good stuff. They're really good, energetic, excited people. I think they're great employees and I think we have to give them all the support we can. Let's see what happens with this. I think it's gonna be a good thing. It's not great. There's no such thing as great. And I think we just gotta go for it. And, you know, let's move on to the next big topic. There's some big ones.
Yes. Thank you, Joe. All right. So we'll look forward to, um, a resolution on the agenda next Wednesday. Unless something catastrophic happens on the legal level. Um, so I'm feeling really good about this and I'm grateful to everybody. Especially Joe and Tweets. We do have a little bit of housekeeping to do tonight before we adjourn. We have before us authorizing the mayor to renew a contract with Andre Gil, who's the prosecuting attorney for the village. A number of years ago, either two seventeen, two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen, um, yet another municipal service was withdrawn by the county. The DA's office used to send, um, a prosecutor to represent the municipality in prosecuting vehicle and, um, traffic issues. And that service was withdrawn by the county and it was left to the villages and towns to take that expense out of their own budget. So here we are. Um, and we have been working with Mr. Gil for two to two or three years, three, three, Jeff, is that right?
I believe this is, yeah, three.
So before putting this request, this proposal forward, I did speak with Officer in Charge Burke and the court clerk to determine that they are happy with his service and they are indeed. And so I would like to um, ask one of you to make a motion to authorize me to sign the contract.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. And last is approving minutes from one twelve. I'm sorry, I was the late reviewer. So sorry for the last minute change. Would someone like to make a motion regarding those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we do have a public comment at the end of the agenda. If there's any other topics that anyone wants to raise. I think everybody's kind of talked out on garbage, but, um, and also if there are things that come to mind over the next week, feel free to email the village clerk at vcsclerk@coldspringny.gov and we'll follow up with questions that way as well. Are there any other comments? Jeff, do you see any hands?
Nope.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
That's a second. Joe, are you second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for everything, everyone. Have a good night. Thank you for coming, folks.
Night, Catherine.
Good night.
That was good. You're a good girl.